Find a seat. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. The first order of business is what I call the preliminaries. This is where I go through some of the basics to explain how we will operate tonight. Town meeting is not the comment section of a select board or school committee meeting, nor does a public forum or a public hearing. What town meeting is, is a legislature for the town of Ashland. And tonight, we are sitting in legislative session. Together, we collectively approve the town budget, vote on capital purchases, approve bylaws, and more. My name is Adam Schuster, and I'm the moderator. My job as moderator is to serve as the presiding officer of this legislature. I believe that part of my job is also to ensure that those here and tenants understand what is going on. I'll do my best to explain anything out of the ordinary. If at any time you have a question about something, please ask, as there are likely others with the same question. I'll be guided in running town meeting by the third edition of Town Meeting Time, which is published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association and generally recognized as the authoritative guide to running town meetings in Massachusetts. Joining me in the front of the auditorium are members of the school committee, members of the select board, members of the finance committee, town council Lisa Mead, town manager Michael Herbert, assistant town manager Jen Ball, finance director Brittany Yakopony, and APS superintendent Jim Adams. With me onstage are town clerk Cindy Livingstone and deputy town clerk Chris Sullivan. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for later rebroadcast on WACA TV. Welcome to those of us watching, to those of you watching. When you checked in this evening, you received an Orange Index card. It is important that you hang on to this card, as you will not be able to vote without it. Because votes will be counted based on the display of cards, non-voters and members of the press may sit anywhere in the auditorium. I will generally be able to determine the results of each vote by a simple show of cards. In the event I am unable to do so, we have tellers that will perform an actual vote count. Tonight's tellers have already been sworn in. Please ensure that you have turned all cell phones and other electronic devices to mute. If you must take or make a phone call during these proceedings, please leave the auditorium to do so. The warrant that was posted and from which we will be working tonight constitutes a notice or warning to all voters of what we will discuss tonight. Town meeting can only take action within the scope of an article on the posted warrant. Similarly, any discussion is limited to the scope of the articles on the posted warrant. Town meeting acts on motions. If there isn't a motion before town meeting, no action, including discussion, can take place. In order to allow for discussion, I will entertain a motion and a second for that motion after each article has been introduced and explained, but before discussion commences. Once a motion has been made and seconded, it is subject to amendments from the floor. The procedures for amending an article are listed at the back of your handbook in the section titled Selected Town Meeting Procedures. If you have a question or comment during discussion of an article, make your way to one of the two microphones and wait to be recognized. After being recognized, please state your name and address and direct all your remarks to me. Please keep your comments brief and ensure that they relate directly to the article being discussed. If you are unable to get to a microphone, please raise your hand, and I will have one brought to you when it's your turn to speak. To ensure that we are able to hear from the greatest number of people, each speaker will be limited to one three-minute turn at the microphone during discussion of each article. Frequency limits will not apply during discussion of the annual budget, but the time limit will. If you are responding to a question, please do so through me. There should be no direct discussion between parties at town meeting. All debate is to be conducted in a respectful and courteous manner. No comments of a personal nature are to be made. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, and personal attacks, will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling or unable to comply with this rule will be removed. I'd also ask that everyone refrain from applause and similar outbursts during discussions. With 14 articles in the warrant, I see no reason that we can't complete our business this evening. I'll do my best to keep things moving along, but ultimately, the length of town meeting is up to all of you in the audience. We have some announcements this evening. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Despite many recent strides in how our society approaches mental well-being, many Americans still don't have access to the high-quality, comprehensive treatment and care they need. In fact, the U.S. Surgeon General has called mental health "the public health crisis of our time." Across the country during May, individuals and organizations will step up to raise awareness of and help address the challenges faced by people living with mental health conditions. An Ashland Department of Prevention and Human Services invites you to learn more about the programs and resources that will be available throughout the month to support mental health, including Art Saves Ashland on May 9th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. here at the high school to celebrate art and mental health. For more information, visit the town's website, ashlandmass.com, and search Mental Health Awareness Month 2024. Annual town elections are three weeks from yesterday. As always, I'm predicting a beautiful day with nothing but sunny skies on May 21st. The date does change every year, though. I never say, always say, "May 21st." I always get the right date. So I'd urge everyone to get out and vote, and when you do, take a neighbor or two with you. Everyone votes here at the high school and polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Please note that vote by... That passes. Onto our business for the night. Article one, here town reports. We have two reports tonight. First is a report from the school committee and Chair Laurie Tosti.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Laurie Tosti, Chair of the School Committee, sitting here with my colleagues and our superintendent and our assistant superintendent, here to share with you just a few things about our budget this year. The details of the budget can be found on our website. This is just a condensed version, just so you get the gist, but please, if you want more information, do reach out to me or go onto the website and search for whatever details you want more information about. Who's moving the slides? Thank you. These were a set of guidelines, the process, just briefly. Early in the school year, the administrators, Superintendent Adams and his entire team, principals, and other administrators get together, and they have certain guidelines by which they go about making a budget or budget proposals. This goes on for several months until they find that they have something that they want to present to the school committee. We meet with all the members for a retreat where we have an opportunity to ask them further questions and have a better understanding of what's being proposed. Sometimes we make changes there. And then, maybe a month or two after that, the school committee votes on the budget. So what's presented tonight is the budget that the school committee has voted on. We always use our mission and our vision and our core values to guide all of our budget decisions. We have a new strategic plan in the Ashland Public Schools, which we've worked on for quite some time. And again, those are all the drivers of our budget decisions. Next, please. Thank you. The budget request, the proposed FY25, was $41,859,543. That represents a 4.1% increase. And on the next slide, you'll see the budget changes from the prior year. We also, we always have changes based on salary increases, and that's usually one of the biggest, if not the biggest, item in our budget changes. Of note, and again, I'm not going to read everything because you can have an opportunity to get more information, and I don't want to take your time tonight, but we are losing some ESER fund grants, some funding that came in during the COVID years that helped us with our budgeting. Some of that's gone now. And we have also started some new programs, particularly the 18- to 22-year-old special education programs. And you can, and we've had an increase in technology is another example, an increase in student services, so that, those are just some of the things that have had the most major impact on our budget. Student enrollment, that is always something that we look at very carefully. Superintendent Adams works with an agency that evaluates budget projections. And of course, enrollment goes into all different kinds of things, how much money we get from the state, how much space we have in our buildings, how much staff we need. And so, pretty consistently, we have had increases in enrollment, an expected increase for next year. And then, we also project down the line to have an idea of where our budget's headed. Next slide, please. We show this at every town meeting, and we have this discussion at every budget workshop that we have. And the reason why we share this, it shows Ashland at the bottom of a list of per pupil spending. We've been at the bottom of that list the entire time that I've been a school committee member, which is now more than a decade, and we've probably been there before that as well. The good news about that is that we are not at the bottom of any of these lists when it comes to performance and quality of life here in the Ashland School District. And in a lot of those metrics, we are nowhere near the bottom. So it shows that we're efficient with the amount of money that we do get. On the other hand, we don't get as much money as many other towns, and there are a lot of other things that we need and that we could be doing if we had the additional amount of money in per pupil spending that other communities have. Next slide, please. Next slide just shows our revolving accounts. And an example would be the school bus revolving account. Money comes in from people who are paying for school bus transportation, and money goes out to spend on the costs that we need to hire the buses and the drivers and so forth. And we've had to take from our revolving accounts, we started with a balance of 6.3 million, a little bit more than that, and we are offsetting the budget down to 4,077,161. Again, dipping into revolving accounts to make up for the loss of the ESER funds, creation of the new special education program. And one of the reasons why we show you that is that budgeting in that way, year after year after year, is not a sustainable thing. At some point, the revolving account balances are drained, and we need to figure out where the money will come to cover our programs. We do always want to share with you the anticipated needs beyond 2025. And the list that we share, again, year after year, is not a bells and whistles like, wouldn't it be nice if we had all these great new programs? It's real needs that we have right now, but that our budget could not accommodate. So just as an example, another physical education teacher replacing the turf, replacing a boiler, and the list has a lot of other items that are along those lines. And we show you that just to show that what we would be doing if we could have additional funding. And also, you know, the point is that if we had additional funding, we would be meeting these needs that are immediate and still not really in a position to have additional, for instance, electives at the high school and certain other things that have always been on our wish list. So we just want the community to be aware of all that. So again, as I said, thank you for coming to town meeting. I am available to answer your questions, Mr. Adams as well, or anybody on the school committee you can feel free to reach out to, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thanks, Laurie. Now with an update on projects going on around town, we have town manager Michael Herbert. Or not.
Patience, Adam, patience. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to town meeting. Just really, as I do every annual town meeting, I want to give a brief update on some of the infrastructure projects that are happening around town and were previously authorized by town meeting. And I'm pleased to say that this year, we've been able to accomplish a lot, close out a bunch of things, and make some significant progress towards others. First, as all of you know, or many of you probably know, we successfully opened the Mendez School in August of 2023. This has been a culmination of years of work. I want to especially thank Paul Kendall, who was chair of the school building committee and the school building committee as a whole, for really shepherding this process, project, and again, getting it opened on time. Our downtown project, so many of you have seen, you know, the brick inlays, the new sidewalks, the lamps, and the new streetlights, signage, landscaping. So we call that Phase One. And Phase One is now complete. You'll see some contractors doing a little touch-up work. We saw them do that last week and a little bit next week. So our next phase is actually basically making all the underground connections to the buildings and getting that energized and set in a place where we can actually remove the wires from the poles and subsequently move or remove the poles. And at that point, the project will be finished. In June of last year, we successfully opened our public safety building. Just like the Mendez School, this is the result of years of work, planning, work, and construction. I would like to thank Assistant Town Manager Jim Ball and the rest of the public safety building committee for doing such a great job on this project. It's clear to see, as you're going down, probably saw it as you were coming to, coming here tonight to vote and participate in town meeting. It's a magnificent building and one that we're really proud of, and our public safety personnel certainly deserve this. Next, just the Valentine Barn on 133 West Union Street. So that's essentially Route 135, getting close to the community center. So last year, we embarked on a $1 million renovation, a restoration of that barn. That has, that was completed in December of 2023. As the weather gets a little bit warmer, we'll be doing some more painting. We've got to put some granite steps in there, but hopefully, we can get that open and let the public see it soon. It is just a magnificent restoration of an old 1700s barn that, timber-framed barn that, you know, some of these pieces of wood, you just wouldn't be able to get anymore. So that's been great. Next, the regional YMCA Center. So that is planned to be next to the Dunkin' Donuts on Memorial Drive, on land that was donated to the YMCA. They have made significant progress too over the last year. So first, in terms of fundraising, we, the YMCA was successful in securing a $2.5 million donation from MathWorks to basically kickstart the fundraising. And then, we were also fortunate to learn that Congressman McGovern, as well as Senators Warren and Markey, were able to secure $5 million for the project through the federal earmark process. So I know the YMCA has been putting together the leadership cabinet, looking at doing more fundraising. And earlier this week, the board, the YMCA board approved funding to continue and basically finalize the engineering and doing some environmental work as well. So happy to see that moving forward. And then, Pond Street. I think, well, that's still going, as you can all tell. So where we are right now in the process is the old telephone poles. The utilities and Eversource are removing those wires, and then, once that is done, the old telephone poles will be removed, and that will allow us to move forward with the, basically completing that intersection with Algonquin. There is some stormwater work that needs to be done, which is pretty substantial, and then also a final pave. So I know, I appreciate everybody's patience. I've been stuck in that traffic before. It's not, it's not pleasant, but hopefully, we'll get this wrapped up earlier, or Mass Gollum will get this wrapped up earlier, or later this year or early next year. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Article two, fiscal year 2025 budget, sponsored by the town manager and finance director. See, the town will vote to raise and appropriate from available funds and/or transfer from available funds to the treasury such sums of money as are necessary to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, for the ensuing fiscal year or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. To start us off on the budget, we'll first hear from town manager Michael Herbert.
So I have to apologize in advance, this does not look as good as Laurie's presentation. Looks a bit sharp, but hopefully, it'll provide some, I think, much-needed context for this year's budget, which has really been kind of challenging. So first off, we, we were faced, even after you took out the request, the additional request for funding from our department heads, we were faced with a pretty substantial budget deficit. And we were able to get that down to around 1.2 million. And we did that through a variety of ways, but it took us some time. Additionally, as we were going through the budget, we received some information from the federal government, which gave us pause in the way that we are using our ARPA funds, our American Rescue Plan Act funds. And so, we had to spend about two or three weeks really just trying to come up with an alternative plan on how we were going to handle that to make sure that we didn't lose the millions of dollars that was coming to us through the federal government. So if you look at this, if you look at the total general fund number, that is going up $5,142,950, or 6.75%. So it is going, it looks like it is going up a lot, but if you go up a couple lines up, you'll see capital projects of $2.6 million, almost $2.7 million. So those are the ARPA projects that we are including this year. So that makes up a little more than half of the overall increase, and that is, so that piece is actually an anomaly. If you look at our regular budget, if you will, that's going up about half that, so about $2.5 million, and an increase on a percentage basis of about 3.35. If you look through, obviously, if you look through the different subtotals here, the ones that you vote on, you'll see a wide variety of changes. Some go up, some go down. That is basically because we're, you know, removing things that, you know, we don't necessarily need for the coming year, adding things that are needed. But then, we also are using revolving funds substantially this year, just like the schools are, to basically balance our budget. And so, some of those, some departments have those revolving funds and some don't. So that's why you're seeing such a shift. So if you include the enterprise funds, the total is going up $5.3 million, or 5.98%. But again, that's artificially inflated because of that capital project number. So just to talk a little bit about the, to the budget deficit. So again, it was pretty substantial this year. It's something, we've experienced deficits in previous years, and we've utilized a number of methods to address that. But this year, again, it was $1.2 million. And there are several reasons for that. But the primary reason is that this town has relied on large developments ever since the 1980s to essentially subsidize the tax base, what we call new growth revenue. And over the last five or six years, we have really adopted what we call like a low or no-growth strategy to, which impacts that new growth figure. And when I say low or no-growth strategy, what does that mean? Well, primarily, it's been with property purchases. So we've purchased the Nicolo property, which was 35 acres, which could have fit several single-family homes, at least 35, but it could have housed a couple of multifamily developments, which can go into the hundreds of units. Same thing with the Rail Transit District property, which was a little over 100 acres, which we purchased. We purchased Tri Street, which is on the 126 side of town. That was almost 10 acres, which was scheduled to be developed. And then, we all know that we purchased the Valentine property, as I showed you earlier, and that was to basically stop a 120-unit development from happening. So we're really at a crossroads as a community. When you have a budgetary situation like we do, or what we call a structural deficit, there's only two ways you fix those. Fairly common sense, right? You either have to reduce expenses, or you raise revenue. And so, we as a community need to make a determination, you know, how we're going to approach, approach this deficit over the coming year. This just shows the graph showing our new growth ever for the last 10 years. You will see this cycle repeat throughout the decades, again, since the 1980s, where the economic cycle, nothing gets built, and so we have relatively low-growth numbers. Then you get an economic boom, where you see a lot of building. That new growth figure came up to $1.3 million. And then, like, we're still in an economic building boom period, but again, you're seeing, you're not seeing the increased new growth numbers because, again, we adopted that slow or no-growth policy. Some of the additions to the FY25 budget include the restoration of two police officers that were reduced from last year's budget to, at the tune of $150,000. We're including $50,000 in our IT budget for permitting software, which we think the public will find a lot more convenient than our current system. We have $50,000 in the DPW, specifically cemetery parks and trees, to handle landscaping of some of these properties that we have bought or that we have taken on responsibility. And then, we've added $50,000 into our facilities department to help maintain our buildings. And that's especially important with the new buildings that we've brought on. I explained already a little bit about ARPA projects, and, you know, these are the ARPA projects that were, that were funded, the Valentine Project, the land acquisition, sidewalks, turf field replacement, and small building, small business assistance. turf field replacement, and small building, small business assistance. Actually, I kind of skipped over, just going over this, this graph, which is really, really important. So the major budgetary reductions, if you look at the bottom half for FY25, to help make up this deficit, or one-time fund usage as well. So we redirected some of those ARPA funds from the Valentine Project to the budget deficit, and that's about $810,000. Again, this is what we call one-time revenue. Usage of the overlay surplus account at $350,000, and I think the balance is $400,000 left in there. The additional shift to the revolving funds totaled $288,000, and then, we're taking money out of the Special Education Stabilization Fund for $250,000. So one of the things that we really try to, what we really try to do here is to use your taxpayer dollars efficiently. And similar to the schools using their per-people expenditure metric, we use expenditures per capita as an objective metric to look at government spending and efficiency. And you probably cannot see all the towns, or the names of the towns, at the bottom, but if you will see here, we're actually third from the bottom in terms of efficiency. So it's about $4,474 per capita. Now, this also includes enterprise funds as well, so not just the general fund. And then, we hope that spending translates to a moderate average single-family tax bill. So even with a substantial increase this past year, Ashland is still, you know, on the lower half of average tax bills, when you compare us to the rest of the region. So understandably, $8, $8,900 is, is significant and substantial if you're living on $24,000 a year in social security income. But if you look at it compared to the rest of the communities, we're average, we're in the bottom half of the average. So, and that is it.
All right. Thank you, Mike. As is our custom, we'll now hear from Scott Warnetsky, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Adam. My name is Scott Warnetsky. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee. With me today is John Moore, Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, and other members, including Ed Hart, Jen Cooney, and Chantal Kokrum. And as Adam mentioned, we do have one vacancy on the committee, so if you find yourselves wanting to join us up here twice a year, that Spring and Fall Town Meeting, please fill out the Talent Bank form, and perhaps we'll see you at a future meeting. So a little bit about the committee. We are a volunteer committee. We are not elected. We are appointed by the Town Moderator to three-year terms that expire at different times. And our primary responsibility are two things. Number one, we are the authorizing body for expenditures from the Reserve Fund. That is something that will be voted on later today as part of the town budget. And those are designated funds within the budget set aside for extraordinary expenditures, which I would say historically have been used to finance deficits, deficits in the snow and ice operations throughout, at the end of the year. We also consider all articles within the town warrant, both fall and spring, and make recommendations on those that will have a financial effect on the town. In order to do that, we conduct public meetings periodically, where we meet with town officials to understand the financial implications of each of the articles to the town finances today, and the town finances into the future. When it comes to the annual budget, we meet with department heads to understand their detailed budget requests. And our goal is to understand what they view as necessary to effectively run their departments, okay? What they present to town management and to the Finance Committee doesn't always make it into the budget. Quite frankly, there are just not enough revenues to meet those requests, as Michael mentioned. So to balance the budget, decisions are made by town management as to what is most necessary in the current budget. So when it comes to the town finances, overall, I think our view is in, our view as a town is in excellent financial health. We continue to maintain an uninsured AAA bond rating. And that, quite frankly, is due to prudent financial management of the town over decades. I've been on the committee now for almost 10 years, or about 10 years or so. Back to the beginning, we established some financial policies as far as managing deficits and surpluses, and how we share them with the schools and the town. And I will say, that's been working wonderfully over the last decade, and that shows in our bond rating and some of the reserves that we have for things like sped stabilization, OPEB stabilization, stabilization, and the overall stabilization fund of the town. I mentioned that, you know, we're interested in, you know, passing this budget and hearing what the town has to say about this budget, but we're also as keenly interested in, you know, what we need to do in order for the town to succeed in the future. I think Michael did a nice job of summarizing some of the challenges we have into the future. And, you know, that is something, as a committee, that we're going to be keenly focused on in the coming year and the years beyond. Thank you, Adam.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Voting on the budget is a two-step process. First, we will review and vote on the appropriations for each of the various accounts. After action's been taken on all of the accounts, we will vote on the overall budget motion. I will start by reading the names of a series of accounts. If you have a question or comment on a particular item, yell out "hold." After voting on all unchallenged items, we'll go back and discuss any that were held. Town manager, central purchasing, telecommunications, town council, data processing, town clerk, elections town meeting, board of registrars, human resources. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. All they all pass. Town accountant, assessor's office, treasurer. All those who favor the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. Conservation Commission, Open Space Committee, Planning Board, Inspection Services Department. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. Police Department, Fire Department. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. Health Department, Council on Aging, Recreation, Veteran Services, Prevention and Human Services, Public Library. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. Public Buildings and Property Maintenance, DPW Administration, Highway, Snow and Ice Removal, Highway Street Lighting, Highway Combined Fuel, Cemeteries, Parks and Trees. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. School Department, Keefe Tech Vocational School. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. Debt, total debt. Okay, well, we'll stay here, because it's the only one we're going to talk about right now. So Mr. Nardone, do you have a question on debt? Why do they make that so high?
Yeah, very high. Julie Nardone, 86 Elliot Street. So I was reading the Mindes School Building Committee minutes, which are very thorough, and it mentioned in December '23 and January '24, that it seemed like the school Mindes project was going to be getting, if I have this right, an extra $5.5 million, or $5.5 million would be something that would be considered. So what I want to know is, since it's in here, how is that going to affect the portion, the portion of the overall bond that the taxpayers pay versus what the MSBA pays? If I have that right?
Mr. Herbert?
That's a good question, and...
If your mic were on, you could answer.
Yeah, I was about to say. We are now?
Okay, there we go.
Those are good questions, Julie, and you're absolutely correct. The, the town and the school district ended up getting an additional $5 million, $5.3 million, I believe, in additional school building assistance funding, thanks to the significant, the important work of Senate President Spilka and Representative Lewis. So we still have an amount to borrow, like you mentioned, and so, that $5 million will be utilized to offset what we have to borrow. So it'll translate into a direct savings to the taxpayer. That does, the $5 million does not mean we're going to increase spending on the whole project by $5 million.
So like, I think it's 17 that might be left, so it's, you subtract it from that.
Yeah, I think, I think it's going to be significantly less, Brittany, than 17 million. The project's still ongoing, and so, there's still some work doing, but I think it was like seven, eight million?
Okay.
That was still remaining? Yeah.
And just one more question that I ask whenever I get up here. Is the copayment for the, of $750,000 for the public safety building in here again this year?
Yes, it's reflected, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor of the debt budget, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. A quick note before we get to the capital projects line. The capital projects listed in the handbook are anticipated to be funded under the account appropriation. The appropriation we are about to make is not for the individual items listed, but rather for the account in total. As such, the individual items listed are not subject to amendment. Capital projects. Here we know holds. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you and opposed. Employee retirement, workers' compensation, unemployment compensation, group health insurance, other insurance, salary contingency, reserve fund. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. Water Enterprise Fund, Sewer Enterprise Fund, Trash Collection, Field Management, Cable Access, Stormwater. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. We have now approved the individual items to the budget. Now, we need to approve the overall funding mechanism. For that, I'll entertain a motion for the General Fund, that the following amounts be transferred from their respective accounts. EMS revolving, $200,000. Sale of cemetery lots, $300,000. Dog licenses, $25,000. Recreation revolving, $12,976. And the balance be raised and appropriated, $76,312,218. For the Water Enterprise Fund, the $3,373,555 be raised through water rates. For the Sewer Enterprise Fund, that $6,446,155 be raised through sewer rates. For the Rubbish Collection Enterprise Fund, that $1,864,688 be raised through solid waste rates. For the Fields Management Enterprise Fund, that $130,954 be raised through fees for field usage. For the Cable Access Enterprise Fund, that $500,000 be raised through cable franchise fees. For the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, that $393,761 be raised through stormwater rates. And for the Economic Development Special Revenue Fund, that $306,710 be appropriated from available meal tax funds. Do I have such a motion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. And we unanimously have a budget for FY25. Article three, transfer to OPEB Trust, sponsored by the Town Manager Finance Director. To see if the town will transfer $350,000 from the OPEB contribution account to the OPEB trust, or pass any, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So OPEB is a fancy way of saying retiree health insurance. So it is a liability that we have to carry on our books, and so, we are in the process of funding that liability, and we use two methods. First is that we take a portion of our free cash each fall and put that towards the OPEB Trust Fund, which is dedicated to that liability. But then, second, we take, so each new employee that we bring on, we fund basically their annual liability cost, and we do that through the budget, through a portion of the health insurance budget. So this is transferring that amount to the OPEB Trust.
To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion for the town to transfer the sum of $350,000 from OPEB contribution account 01915-51709 to the OPEB Trust account 88100-49710. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move on to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article four, transfer from Special Education Stabilization to General Fund, Stabilization Fund to General Fund, sponsored by the Town Manager Finance Director. To see if the town will transfer $250,000 from the Special Education Stabilization Fund to the General Fund, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as mentioned before in the budget presentation, we are utilizing $250,000 from the Special Education Stabilization Fund for the General Fund budget, and this money is used to fund out-of-district special education costs.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. Allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion for the town to transfer the sum of $250,000 from the Special Education Stabilization Fund to the General Fund. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move on to a vote. And for, for those folks who have been attending town meeting for a while, when I tell you we only need a simple majority for this, you're going to ask me why, so I'll just tell you now. Back in the day, it required a two-thirds majority to put money into a stabilization fund, and to take money out of a stabilization fund. A while back, our friends on Beacon Hill said, "Yeah, that's too complicated," and made it a simple majority to put money in, and two-thirds to take it out. Then they decided that wasn't complicated enough. So now, you only need a simple majority to take money out of a special-purpose stabilization fund, which is what the sped fund is. So now, it requires a majority. Don't laugh at me, Jack, you're the one who voted for it. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Annual five, our annual consent article for general items, sponsored by the Select Board, to see if the town will vote the following consent articles, which I will not read in their entirety. Grant program authorization, road contracts, contracts in excess of three years, lease purchase agreements, revolving funds, grant easements. Please note that this article also makes a change to the Community Center Rental Revolving Fund by renaming it to the Town Building Rental Fund, and allowing for inclusion in the revolving fund of fees from any town property that collects rental or use fees. The Finance Committee recommends the town approve Article Five as set forth in the warrant, amend the General Bylaw, Section 26-5DA, and set the maximum amount that may be spent on revolving funds in subsection five of Article Five. Given the routine nature of the items contained within consent articles, they are normally voted without discussion. As such, I will ask for a motion and then move directly to a vote. I'll entertain a motion, the town approve Article Five as set forth in the warrant and... and amend general bylaw, section 26-5 DA, and further that the town set the maximum amount that may be spent on revolving funds in subsection five of Article five as follows: Senior program revolving $25,000, town building rental $75,000, Town of Holliston animal control revolving $114,000, library materials replacement $5,000, hazardous waste revolving $10,000, sidewalk construction fund $50,000, guidance revolving fund $50,000, food inspection programs $20,000, electrical inspections and gas inspection revolving fund $150,000, tobacco program revolving $10,000, ambulance revolving $900,000, recreation revolving $500,000, vaccination clinic revolving $30,000. Do I have such a motion? This will require a two-thirds majority to the approval due to the inclusion of easements. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you and opposed. That passes unanimously. Article six, the second of our consent articles, the annual consent article for Community Preservation Act items sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote the following items: Community Preservation Funds FY '25 Annual Appropriations, from FY '25 estimated revenues to community committee administrative expenses, $55,370; from FY '25 estimated revenues to Historic Resources Reserve, to Community Housing Reserve, and to Open Space Reserve, $105,203 each; and from FY '25 estimated revenues to Undesignated Budgeted Reserve, $736,422; Oak Street Bond Payment to appropriate $140,650; High School Athletic Fields Bond Payment to appropriate $30475; Warham Woods Bond Payment to appropriate $151,250 from the following FY '25 CPA Reserve Accounts: Historic Resources Reserve, $48,400, Open Space Reserve, $40,838, Undesignated Budgeted Reserve, $62,012. Please note that due to the scripter's errors, error, the warrant erroneously refers to FY '2014 CPA Reserve Accounts, and the amounts were not updated from last year. The amounts I read are the correct amounts and are lower than last year. Valentine Estate to appropriate $46,286 from the following CPA Reserve Accounts: Open Space Reserve, $6,614, Undesignated Budgeted Reserve, $39,672. Pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Community Preservation Committee recommends the town so vote. The finance committee recommends the town approve the CPC consent article as set forth in Article six. As with Article five, due to the routine and recurring nature of this article, I will ask for a motion and then move directly to a vote. I'll entertain, I have to entertain, thank you, but I have to ask for the motion first. I move that the town approve CPC consent article as set forth in Article six. Do I have such a motion? All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you and opposed. That passes unanimously. May I help you?
Next one's Community Preservation Committee. I'm the chair of the Community Preservation Committee, so I didn't know if I could make this discussion.
Yeah, okay, just, I can't even see from here. Before we move to Article seven, so you're jumping the gun a little bit. You didn't know I had this section, sorry. Before we move to Article seven, I want to first address Article fourteen, the MBTA Community Zoning Article. This topic has been controversial in many other communities, and I'm sure there are varying opinions in Ashland. No doubt, some of you here this evening came to express your views on this article, and out of respect for you, I want to read this now rather than waiting until later. At its meeting on April 25th, the planning board voted to keep their public hearing on this matter open to provide more time to actively work on the bylaw changes, and at this time has no recommendation to give town meeting. Mass general law requires that all zoning articles must have a planning here, a public, sorry, a public hearing which closes and a recommendation by the planning board in order to be considered by town meeting. Since that hasn't happened, town meeting can't consider the article, and no action will be taken on it. Tricia Kendall, Chair of the Planning Board, is here to provide a brief explanation of the planning board's action and where the matter goes from here. Please note that Tricia will be unable to answer any questions and will move directly to Article seven at the conclusion of her comments. Tricia?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tricia Kendall, Six Rebenaker Road, and I am current chair of the planning board. In September, Select Board Member Joe Mignani and I, along with the town planner and assistant town planner, began work to create a bylaw that satisfied the state's MBTA communities' regulation in a way that respected the town of Ashland. Six weeks ago, we had a plan that we felt good about, though there was some risks to two unbuilt projects, both of which contained 25% affordable units. Four weeks ago, the town received notice that a 40B application was submitted to the state for 10 to 60 Main Street in downtown Ashland. A second 40B application has now been submitted for a site near the high school. We had not wanted to use and did not use these sites in our proposed bylaw. However, because of the changed circumstances, we are no longer confident that we are providing an MBTA communities' bylaw that is best for Ashland. For the state, the deadline to pass MBTA community zoning is December 31st. Though we worked hard to offer this bylaw at Spring Town Meeting, the working group strongly feels it should wait until fall so that we can see how the 40B process and other factors that induce risk into our plan will play out over the next six months. Our working group remains determined to offer Ashland residents the best possible plan on which to vote. Thus, the bylaw will be presented at Fall Town Meeting. The working group will, the working group will diligently continue its efforts until that time. When we have additional forums, we strongly encourage you to attend. We need to hear your voices. If you have questions or comments before that time, please contact the planning department, and your input will reach the working group. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Article seven, appropriate funds for preserving the library interior painting sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to appropriate $40,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to fund improvements to paint the interior of the library to preserve the historic library. $40,000 from the undesignated reserve, said funds will be to be available until December 31st, 2026, at which time any unexpended funds will be returned to their funding sources or pass any vote or take any action, other action relative thereto. Community Preservation Committee recommends the town so vote. The finance committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Ladd, now.
I feel like I'm following an elephant in the room after the MBTA thing, but that's okay. Article seven, related to Article six, as you can see from our CPA funds, in a moment of opportunity, we are having greater revenues than our expenses, and we're paying off our bonds over the next few years. So CPA funds are actually growing in reserve accounts and present a great opportunity for the town, giving us a chance to do projects like the library. It's a CPA-funded project from several years ago, but the interior, first floor, main space on the ceiling, needs some paint restoration to match what's there, and a great opportunity to continue the work we're doing at the library. But I just want to comment on the previous article that CPC is paying off our debts, funds are growing, and giving us opportunity to do great projects like this. So thank you.
Mr. Ladd, I'll just do a public shout-out that maybe next year, we could have a report like that under Article one. We used to, and I think town meeting found that useful.
I'll find some pretty pictures. I put it in the scoreboards today over at the middle schools, and I think I did the round-the-town trip today doing the Troy Brook Trail, Riverwalk Projects, Town Hall, they're all great CPC projects that are going on and concluding. So, thank you.
That's great, but I was referring to actually the balances in the account.
That's good, too.
Yeah. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town votes to appropriate $40,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to fund improvements and to paint the interior of the library to preserve the historic library. $40,000 from the undesignated reserve, said funds to be available until December 31st, 2026, at which time any unexpended funds will be returned to their funding sources. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move on to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article seven, please raise your cards. Thank you and opposed. That passes unanimously. Article eight, authorize the select board to accept gift of land sponsored by the town manager. See if the town will accept a gift of real property from the Hopkinton Land Trust or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town so vote. Ms. Greaves?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a donation of land that we have to accept. The Hopkinton Land Trust is an organization that we're actually working with to hold our CR for the Valentine property, and as we were speaking with them, they have a couple of really small parcels here in Ashland that they would like to donate to the town. So in this article, we're just looking for your approval to allow the select board to accept that donation as a gift of property.
Thank you, Ms. Greaves. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town accept a gift of real property from the Hopkinton Land Trust, shown as Town of Ashland Assessor's Map 18 Lot 0142, to be for conservation purposes and to be under the care, custody, and care, custody, and control of the select board, and the property shown as Town of Ashland Assessor's Map 18 Lot 0067, and Map 18 Lot 0074, and Map 18 Lot 0100, for general municipal purposes. All the foregoing properties to be under the care, custody, and control of the select board, and to further authorize the select board to execute any documents to effectuate this transaction. Do I have such a motion? Discussion.
Curtis Hoffman, 58 Hill Del Road, do you have any sense of what purpose you might use these parcels for at this time?
Usage of the parcels.
My understa-
Oh, Ms. Greaves, sorry, I didn't see.
That's okay. My understa-, we are currently just looking at them for open space. They're very small parcels. They're not connected in any way, so just open space.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article eight, please raise your cards. Thank you and opposed. That passes unanimously. Article nine, reauthorize the fire truck at Middle School locker project borrowing, sponsored by the town manager and finance director. See if the town will vote to amend the motion taken under Article four of the May 4th, 2022 annual town meeting to increase the appropriation for the fire tower truck project and the girls' and boys' middle school locker room project, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town amend the vote taken under Article four of the May 4th, 2022 annual town meeting to increase the borrowing amount of the projects by $264,092.27. The total appropriation of the capital project be $1,964,092.27. Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as this says, this is basically amending a vote that was taking a couple, taken a couple of years ago in order to purchase a tower truck and then also renovate the girls' and boys' locker rooms at the middle school. So, a couple of years ago, when we first did this, we basically crafted language that we thought would basically address all the issues that we needed to. Unfortunately, when it passed and we got to Bond Council, which is essentially the legal team that, you know, blesses our bonds before we put them out there, we found that there was a difference in interpretation than what we had. So, unfortunately, we're back here a couple of years later, and we need to increase this appropriation by $264,000.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town amend the vote taken under Article four of the May 4th, 2022 annual town meeting to increase the borrowing amount of the projects by $264,092.27. That the total appropriation for the following capital projects be $1,964,092.27 as follows: Girls' and Boys' Locker Rooms, Middle School, $200,000; Fire Tower Truck, $1,764,092.27. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer's authorized with the approval of the select board to borrow a total amount of $1,700,000 under and pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and to reallocate $264,092.27 of excess bond proceeds previously borrowed from the projects described in the warrant, which amounts are no longer needed to pay costs of the projects for which they were initially borrowed. Council, do I need to read those projects? Excellent. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article nine, please raise your cards. Thank you and opposed. That passes unanimously. Sorry, I declare a two-thirds, requires two-thirds majority. I declare a two-thirds majority on that. Article 10, reauthorize public safety building bonds sponsored by the town manager. See if the town will reauthorize the borrower to approve the construction of the public safety building to include the land acquisition related to the public safety building or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this actually references or is in regards to property that surrounds the public safety building that is owned by the Fafford Corporation. It's a property that the town has interest in for a number of different reasons. So first of all, it would help us provide some additional parking for the public safety building. Additionally, it's been identified as a parcel that is critical and important to the creation and construction of the Upper Charles Trail. And then additionally, it could be used with a lot of site work to expand the cemetery if and when we needed to do that. So I just want to clarify and make sure everybody understands, this is not increasing the authorization, authorization amount at all. This is just repurposing the bonds that have already been borrowed to include using it for land acquisition.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town reauthorize the borrower to approve the construction of the public safety building in Article one of the January 24th, 2021 special town meeting, and Article nine of the special November 28th, 2018 town meeting, and reauthorize in Article two of the December 21st, 2020, 21 special town meeting to include land acquisition related to the public safety building. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Because this relates to borrowing, this will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you and opposed. That passes unanimously. Article 11, authorize a wastewater capital, wastewater treatment capital project sponsored by the town manager, finance director, and director of public works. See if the town will vote to appropriate, transfer, or otherwise provide $4 million for the engineering, design, construction, and all costs incidental and related thereto in order to replace the existing 20-plus-year-old ozone system at the water treatment plant located at 229 House Street or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as this says, this is actually to authorization to borrow $4 million to replace the ozone filtration system that is in our water treatment facility, which is now, believe it or not, over 20 years old. So equipment obviously wears down and eventually needs to be replaced. So this is an expensive component, but it's a really, really important component, as the ozone system is really kind of our frontline treatment system and filtration system for our water that we distribute out to the community. It filters out different contaminants and really, it does a great job of filtering out things that really change the aesthetics of the water, like manganese and other, other minerals. So it's what provides clean drinking water for the community. So again, we project these costs to be $4 million. We do anticipate that the Town of Hopkinton, because they utilize some of our water and also share in the costs of our operations and actually the construction of the water treatment plant, they will be appropriating $1 million to help pay for this. So ultimately, we hope the town will only be on the hook for $3 million, but we do need to ask for the full authorization.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town appropriate $4 million for the engineering, design, construction, and all costs incidental and relative, related thereto in order to replace the existing 20-plus-year-old ozone system at the water treatment plant located at 229 House Street, and authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the select board- the Select Board, to borrow said amount, under and personal to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Do I have such a motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to a vote. This involves borrowing and will therefore take a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article 12, update bylaw, demolition delay for historically or architecturally, architecturally significant buildings sponsored by the Historical Commission. See if the town will vote to amend Section 125 of the general bylaws, demolition delay bylaw for historically or architecturally significant buildings, as indicated in your warrant book, or take any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee defers its recommendation to town meeting. Ms. Confriday.
Yes, Joan Confriday, Winshaw Road, I'm a member of the Historical Commission. We're looking for your support for an update to the demo delay bylaw. The purpose of the demo delay bylaw is to encourage owners to seek out persons who might be willing to purchase, preserve, rehabilitate, or restore, rather than demolish Ashland's historically significant buildings. Also to allow time to explore economic opportunities, which may allow for preservation of the threatened properties, is not to prevent demolition. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry. Currently, an owner anticipating a sale of their property with the possibility of demolishing a 70-plus-year-old building can go through the process if the building is determined to be historically significant. They can wait out the delay and not have to come before the Historical Commission again. Next slide, please. There are two changes we are requesting. The next slide, please. First, if the property is sold, the new owner must go through the process for current determination. Second, if three years go by with no approved plan, the owner will need to go through the process again. Basically, we've added a sunset clause. The hope is that you can support the changes to encourage owners of historically significant properties to seek out options that will preserve Ashland's historical buildings for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion, if the town amend Section 125-5 of the general bylaws as outlined in Article 12. Do I have such a motion?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple... Oh, sorry. Thank you for pointing it out.
Lorraine Jajari, 2 High Street. We live and operate Burnham's Restaurant. With all the talk about buildings at previous meetings, there's no mention of the people that live and maintain the buildings. My husband has lived 90% of his 71 years in our building, through good times and bad. During his childhood, there were two families of Jajaris with lots of kids living here. We raised two children of our own here. There was also a lot of turmoil and the tragic death of a child. It will be extremely difficult for him to see this building gone, compared to someone who once said, "I drive by every day and would hate to see that building gone." But it's time to go. We're both in our 70s, and there are health issues. He works more than 60 hours a week running a stressful business and maintaining an old building and a two-acre property. My work is greater than 50 hours a week. The major lesson I learned from a very difficult time in my parents' lives was that you must get out of your big old house while you're still physically able to do so. So we accounted on the sale of our property to retire and downsize. You already have imposed a 12-month delay, but that's not enough for you. Yes, it would be nice to preserve some of the historical features, but we fear you will push for a full restoration. That very expensive cost for a developer would have to come out of our sale price. We hear all the time that we have a very desirable property, but that does not mean valuable to the seller. Our fear is that your increased restrictions and others, like the increased cost of new construction proposed with the specialized stretch code, will drive developers away to other larger properties without historical buildings. Our situation is very similar to the old fire station. Mr. Herbert said the value of that combined property was about $1.5 million, but any offer to purchase will be nowhere near that because of the cost of renovation. There was a lot of optimism for that potential, but you were not able to find an interested buyer. The RFP process brought interested business owners to tour the property. One said the building is too small, needs a lot of work, the return on investment isn't there. Another said the cost would be in excess of $2 million to renovate, not feasible for any business owner. We realize there are people in Ashland that would be happy if nothing is ever built here. Our dilemma, when we are no longer able to keep the restaurant going, we probably won't be able to afford to live in this building. On top of all this, our insurance company notified us recently that our fire and liability insurance will not be renewed, not from lack of payments. Our insurance agent said, "Lots of carriers have decided not to insure older buildings." The new codes make the repairs very expensive.
I'm gonna need you to, I'm gonna need you to ask you to finish up, please.
One, 10 more seconds. "To all of the residents who own a nice home in Ashland, you could likely sell it in a month or two, maybe even get more than the asking price, if you needed to retire, or if you suddenly needed to pay the cost of a long-term care facility. Yet you would like to prevent us from having that same opportunity. We are outraged that a member of your commission accused us of gaming the system. This is no game, sir. We are fighting for the ability to support ourselves for the final chapter of our lives."
Thank you.
That was my beautiful wife.
Excuse me, sir. It's, I'm gonna go to the other side of the auditorium.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Then please step out, and we'll call you back, we need you. Ma'am.
Helen Nicole, 4 Elliott Circle. This change to the bylaw doesn't keep you from selling your property, it only keeps you from waiting out a delay bylaw and then letting the, oh, the person that purchased it buy it with the delay bylaw in place. The person who buys it can go through the delay bylaw process like you can, and they can also see-
Please don't direct your comments to anyone in particular other than me.
Sorry, like, okay, so the person buying a property in Ashland will be able to go through a delay bylaw process regardless, and so it does not, it does not indicate that they would not be able to sell their property. Thank you.
Sir.
Dan Jajari, Burnham's Pubhouse, 2 High Street, Ashland, I live at. Couple of years ago, I decided it's time to retire. I have 45 years in running the building, got through all the ups and downs of running the business. And I approached the Historical Commission. The reason I did is because I talked to several people, and the highest and best use of the property would be to develop it. It is a good location for something. That's not my business. I've been running the pub for a long time, but the next owner would probably want to develop something. So I took the initiative to go to the Historical Society and put in an application for demolition. And I told them at that point in time, "I have no plan right now. I'm just putting you on notice that there are probably going to be changes at that address. And I feel it's best to get it out on the, on the, on the table so that everyone can react." Now, I haven't done anything further other than further look for opinions on the best way to approach either selling or getting in business some way, shape, or form, or making a deal with the developers. Oftentimes, these, these options are, these real estate options are based on what they can and can't build, and oftentimes, you can't come up with the final price until they go through the process of going through the permitting process. And it's, it's a moving target. I don't know. I'm trying, all of my equity is in the building, so I'm trying to extract everything I can out of it, because it's the only thing I got to, to live on as a retirement. Now, I think this, this bylaw, by expanding it, is only going to interfere with it and make it higher. As my wife just said, my insurance company's not going to renew my insurance, and the reason given is because it's an old building and all the new by, I mean, all the new laws requiring, or payoffs for insurance are very expensive for an old building, because it's hard to assess exactly what values are for an old building. It's just a very difficult position to be in. I hope, it used to be nine-month delay, now it's a 12-month delay. I hope this is defeated. I appreciate the support from the townspeople. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Nielsen, 35 Ramblewood Drive. I am currently the Chair of the Historical Commission. The purpose of this amendment is not to go back and revisit prior properties that have already come before the Commission, is our understanding that those properties will be grandfathered and not affected by this amendment. The purpose of this amendment is in the future to go ahead and have people come up with a plan before the demolition process takes hold. And it's, it's a way to increase participation between the town and the owner before the property is demolished, if the property is deemed significant. Not every property in Ashland that's over 70 years old will be deemed significant, or historically, or architecturally, something that needs to be preserved. There are many properties that have gone before us already. This one, there's a bunch in that area. They won't be before this, and they won't be affected by this amendment. They're effectively, it's like the mill buildings, for example. We have no control over that. That's already been before us, and it's already gone. So it's not going to affect currently anybody that's already gone through the demolition delay. I can't stress that enough. This is going forward. This is a way to, to try to work to preserve some of the properties, not to prevent anybody from selling their property or any of that. We're not trying to take away anybody's livelihood or, or anybody's retirement. I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Town Council, I was gonna, can we get an opinion on the veracity of that statement?
So, Lisa Mead, Town Council, Mr. Moderator. I would just like to clear, this is a general bylaw, so there is no grandfathering under the general bylaw. However, the, there's no change to the length of time of the, of the delay, it's still 12 months, no matter what. So this changes the fact that if the building is turned over, the new owner must file for a delay. And then after three years, the, the delay that had been approved, if it's not used, goes away. Those are the only two changes.
Ms. Nardum.
Uh, so-
Would someone please lower that microphone, so Julie's not breaking her neck?
Yeah. Thank you. Right before we leave.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. Historic preservation, which is what this is trying to do, actually is economic development, and I think part of the reason we struggle with our downtown, unlike revitalization, unlike some other places, is because we've lost a lot of our historic buildings, and it's all driven by, believe it or not, people coming down, they want to learn about the history of the place and see these buildings. They can be lower rent for artists to come in, and I think if we continue down this path, we're just gonna have apartment buildings everywhere in this town, and that's it. If that's what you want, I don't know. Thank you.
Mr. Kendall.
Paul Kendall, 6 Rebenaker Road. I do understand the intent of this, and I don't disagree with the intent of it, Mike. My concern is that it doesn't take into account the typical process for someone like that homeowner, that a developer is not going to purchase the property a lot of times before it is permitted. So they'll go through the permitting process and get it permitted, and the sale is pending that, but then that will reset the demolition bylaw. And so I think this needs to be amended to account for what the practical process is for these types of developments, because they're essentially going to get, get a second bite at an apple that you've already really evaluated, and there's no change, because the intent was to get a project permitted and then sell that permitted project and property to that developer. That's where a lot of times the value is, is a permitted project on a property. That's what the developers are going to want. So I'm a little concerned just that, that's, you know, I understand the intent, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to operate in the way that it's intended. And quite frankly, I also, in somewhat relation to this, think more time being spent on developing an objective rubric and way to evaluate these properties, because what I've heard from, over and over again, is not, not a clear understanding and kind of, I don't want to call it arbitrary, because it's not, I don't want to demean what people are doing and their opinions, but that it's somewhat arbitrary how something is deemed to be historically significant or architecturally significant and things like that. So I'd like to see more time spent on that. This, as it is, I understand the intent of it, I don't think it's going to work the way, or I think it's going to be negatively impacting for that typical process for how you give the development a darn. So, thank you.
Ma'am, I believe you've already had a turn of the microphone.
Yeah. I don't get a second.
You don't?
Okay.
Joan, your presentation doesn't count as a time of the microphone.
Mr. Moderator, is it possible to put a substitute motion in?
If you present it to me in writing, I'll be happy to consider it.
Okay.
Is it, Joan, is it going to be significant? Because if it is, I'm happy to table this and move on to after Article 13, to give you a chance. Take a motion with the thought to table Article 12 until after Article 13, Action of 13 is completed?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Article 12 is tabled until the conclusion of Article 13. Joan, I would encourage you to visit Town Council up front while you're writing, so you can make sure any changes you made fit within the framework of the bylaw. Article 13, update bylaw, accept specialized stretch code sponsored by the Sustainability Committee. See if the town will vote to amend Section 98.7, sounds like a radio station, sorry, of the general bylaws of the Town of Ashland bylaws entitled Stretch Energy Code, or take any other, any action of the relative thereto. Note that due to scrivener's error, the warrant was printed with an incorrect effective date. If you look at Section B, it says September 1, 2023. It should say January 1, 2025, and that'll be corrected by the forthcoming motion. The Finance Committee defers its recommendation to town meeting. Ash.
Thank you, Adam. Can you go to the next slide? Okay, so we've, we've actually talked about this in a previous town meeting, but I just want to highlight again that what we're discussing right now is the specialized code. The town already operates under the stretch code, so the state of Massachusetts has three separate codes, and we really are only focusing on these specialized codes. Last time we had this discussion, there was a lot of confusion about attributes of the stretch code that, that were discussed, and, and those don't apply right now for this article at all. It's only the specialized codes. If you don't mind moving to the next slide. So what this specialized code does, it's, one, applies only to new constructions, so it does not apply for any renovations of any kind. It's purely new construction. And it has really three, three requirements. It says, one, all new buildings must be either already fully electric or should be pre-vired to be electric, so that when you're building it, while the walls are down, you're able to put some wiring in, and it's much cheaper. Number two, it says that buildings that are planning to use either natural gas, coal, or any other kind of fossil fuel must include onsite solar, but then they provide exemptions where solar is not feasible. For example, if the lot is a shaded lot, you don't have to put the solar in. And then there are specific requirements for large buildings, where if you're a new single-family home that's greater than 4,000 square feet, that should be all-electric or should be certified as a net zero building, or if it's a multifamily home greater than 12,000 square feet, that would include commercial property, for example. Those should be certified as, as passive houses. So the real purpose behind the specialized code is to really make it simpler, to switch towards electrification. We've done a lot of work in town. We've adopted a goal for achieving net zero by 2040, and buildings constitute the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Ashland. But we continue to build buildings that are still reliant on fossil fuels, and those buildings are going to last for 50 or 60 years, 70 years. And so if- And so effectively, we're continuing to just dig the hole deeper. And so what we are really asking is to adopt a code that has been reviewed, has been adopted by a number of other towns in the state of Massachusetts, and really start making the shift now so that we have some hope of achieving the goal that we set for ourselves. If you don't mind going to the next slide. Again, I'll just reiterate these points. One, the code only applies to new construction. It has nothing to do with remodeling. Your existing buildings do not get impacted by the code at all. Two, there was a lot of conversation last time about construction costs. In the last two to three years, a lot of data has been collected that suggests that the additional cost of building, you know, to this stretch code, to the specialized code, is about 1% to 4%. I have had conversations in the last few months, as we've been talking to a number of stakeholders, about, you know, what they're really seeing. Some of them are suggesting five to 10. But regardless, there are a number of very significant incentives that also come into play. And most importantly, while the cost may be a little bit higher, there's significant payoff because you're really only paying for electricity at that stage. The code is not a ban on fossil fuel. That's something that we've heard a lot of times. There are still parts that you can adopt fossil fuels. It just requires higher efficiency. And then again, the solar exemption has-- there is an exemption for shaded lots. Ashland has actually been quite good about leveraging our getting community status, getting state grants. There is now a new program called the Climate Leader that does require adoption of the specialized code. And so it's certainly our hope that you will vote to do so. Next slide. Again, not going to drain this slide, but as of now, there are about 36 communities, some of them right around us as well, that are seriously looking at this. Hopkins got their town board coming up as well.
Thank you.
And so we have spent time in the last year working with the Building Inspector. We've brought in D O E R to hold multiple sessions. Those have been posted publicly. We've presented to the ABA. We've had pretty good participation from builders, from architects, just explaining what the code includes and to answer questions. Again, those materials are now available to us as training materials as well, and we do have access to additional training if it's needed, which is one of the reasons why the code only starts applying in Jan, so it gives us time to transition over. And then final slide. So again, it's basically a necessary step to fight the climate crisis that we have. We've made a commitment. We've made a paper commitment at this stage, but we've got to actually start taking action towards achieving those goals. It makes new buildings future-ready by avoiding future retrofits, reduces the overall operating cost of those buildings. It does allow both electric and fossil fuel, though with fossil fuel, you do have to meet a higher efficiency standard, and then qualifies the town for additional grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Ash. To allow discussion, I entertain a motion to the Town amend Section 98.7 of the general bylaws as outlined in Article 13, with a change in the effective date to January 1, 2025. Do I have such a motion?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Hoffman?
A question. If this is adopted, will it apply to 40B projects?
Can I?
No.
Yeah.
Good thing you didn't say it in words. Mark Sony, 49 Hawthorne Road, Ashland, MS. All for this, for the new construction, all for because when developers come in, they're going to see that we're going to be updating what they want to put in. And it's new social electricity. I'm not going to stay up here for the three minutes, I guarantee it. What I'm saying, go forward, sustainability, make this town go forward as a net-zero climate leader. I understand that Gen C behind us will thank us for it.
Clint Travis, 35 Franklin Road. I have a lot to say about this particular subject, way beyond three minutes, but I will keep it to two and a half. Here we go. I'm the principal of an architectural design company, GMT Home Designs. I've lived in Ashland at 35 Franklin Road since 2003, and my design office is located on Pleasant Street near downtown Ashland. We design both homes and light commercial spaces. As both a designer and an Ashland resident, I want to advocate that as a design company, we vote for the opt-in code for new construction. I have personally done a tremendous amount of research on this topic since January 2023 to come to this conclusion, since this directly affects the industry that I am passionate about and deeply involved in. I have relationships with many architects and designers, as well as many builders, and we've had some robust discussions on this very topic. This will make Ashland more sustainable and let us keep our official green community status. Here's what it means. Opting into these stretch goals will require all new homes and commercial buildings to meet higher standards of energy efficiency. You'll hear a lot about what's called HERS rating. HERS stands for Home Energy Rating System, and it's a scale of 1 to 100 where lower is better. Lower HERS rating means the house is more efficient. The stretch code requires new homes built today to be about 55% more efficient than a house built in 2006, which honestly is not that long ago. The opt-in HERS rating goes down to 45 and 42 respectively. Now it's at 55 and 52, depending on the design path to get there. An independent study showed that meeting this code adds about 1% to 4% to the initial cost of building a new home. I understand that that's not nothing, and could be a bit more, but it's a small percentage for a new house, and you start saving on your energy bills right from day one. The long-term gains, in my opinion, far outweigh the upfront costs. This code isn't perfect. We need the state to provide a bit more clarity to cost-effective requirements for additions and renovations to older homes, which this is not about. That's a separate issue in where there was confusion a year ago. That's not what we're talking about here tonight. It's specifically for new construction. The benefits for all of us here really outweigh the concerns, in my personal and professional opinion. So I encourage everyone tonight to lift up that orange card.
10 seconds to spare. Well done.
I'm going to make this tall again.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hi, my name is Martha Coleman. I'm a resident of 44 Alden Street. I moved to Ashland last June with my partner, Ryan. He's over there. He works at the library. And since being here, I've had the pleasure to be involved in a lot of community organizations, including the newly formed Energize Ashland group. And I've learned a lot about what you guys are up to around town locally when it comes to sharing information with your neighbors about how we can move towards climate resilience. I am a member of the aforementioned Generation Z, and as somebody who doesn't plan to have kids much before the 2030s, I think that doing this move now and ensuring that we do our utmost to reduce the impact that we're having on increased fossil fuels in the atmosphere, increased climate crises, is really, really critical. We know that, as Ash mentioned, that buildings are one of the biggest contributors to greenhouse gases in Ashland. And because of the commitments we've made to reduce to net zero by 2040, it really feels like this is not an issue of if we do this, but when we do this. And I'm just standing up here to say, like, let's do this now. Let's do this today. Let's not wait any longer to secure that future for our town and for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see someone up there? Tricia?
Tricia Kendall, 6 Rebenaker Road. I want to point out that I'm talking as a resident and not as a member of the planning board. First, I did want to make one clarification, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think-- it's not an automatic no for a 40B project. For a 40B project, the project would have to ask for a waiver from the town bylaws, which they can do with everything else. But I don't think it's an automatic no. But I just wanted to make that clear. Anyway--
So it's a win-the-lottery option?
Right.
So we have to win the lottery to get--
You might say.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I'll just continue with Tricia Kendall, resident. In the fall, I spoke against adopting this bylaw, not because I am against sustainability, but because I am an architect. At that time, the updated stretch code was brand-new, and everyone in the building industry was struggling to understand and implement it. It felt very unwise to me to jump on board with an additional energy code that was not fully understood. Six months later, the stretch code is still difficult for our industry. But this is the specialized code. In sustainability, it is said that the greenest building is the one that is already built. Any new home or office building requires land, building materials, energy, and other resources that could have been saved by not building that building. If, however, a new home or other building is to be built, the specialized code will work to strongly discourage the use of fossil fuels in them. New buildings will be asked to help compensate for the resources they are using by being all-electric buildings, net-zero buildings, or by using solar panels. In high school, almost 40 years ago, I first heard the phrase, "Think global, act local." And it has been a part of my thoughts ever since. Ashland will not change the course of the world through adoption of this bylaw, but we can do our fair share. I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Lids, 150 Oregon Road. I serve as the Vice Chair of the Sustainability Committee, and I want to just give a very, very big picture on this. There's a lot of complicated regulations. It's-- I've spent tons of time looking at that. What this comes down to is, if you think that climate change is a major issue and a major problem we're facing, then this is, as complicated as it is, the best step we can possibly take, and I hope everyone will vote for it.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote on Article 13. This will require a simple majority. We'll start with a show of cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. Article 13 passes. At this point, I'll take a motion to bring Article 12 back from the table. Do I have such a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, bring Article 12 back up. Please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. So, okay, back to Article 12. I have a substitute motion. The substitute motion, if you just follow along in your warrant book, it'll probably be clearer. The underlying Section B that starts, "If the building or premises changes ownership, the new owner must resubmit..." dot, dot, dot. The substitute motion is that, "If the building or premises changes ownership without an approval plan, the new owner must..." dot, dot, dot. So it's the insertion of the four words "without an approval plan" after "ownership" on the first line of Section B. Is that clear to everyone with the motion?
Mr. Moderator, it's my writing you can't read. It's approved, past tense, A-P-P-R-O-V-E-D, not--
Without an appro-- what did I say, approval?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's your writing.
Of course it is.
Thank you for the clarification. Without an approved-- Okay. Without an approved plan, is that clear to everyone what the substitute motion is?
You will?
Sure. Let me read the entire revised Section B. It would now read, "If the building or premises changes ownership without an approved plan, the new owner must resubmit a request for a demolition permit, and the demo delay process will be repeated per Chapter 125." Okay. Now that everyone is clear what the motion is, do I have a second for that substitute motion?
Second.
There's a second for the motion. We'll now open discussion on this motion. The way this will work is, there'll be discussion or not of the substitute motion. Once the discussion is finished or doesn't happen, we'll take a vote on the substitute motion. If the substitute motion passes, we'll go back to discussion of the article, as we normally would have. If the substitute motion fails, we'll go back to discussion of the article as it currently reads. Did you have a comment? Joan?
I just want to make a comment that Mr. Kendall brought up a good point, and I think that it was never the Historical Commission's intent to have someone already have an approved plan and have to come back if it was sold.
Sir?
Rangarajin Krishnamurti, 59 Blue Jay Lane. So in order for somebody to be able to sell their house, they're going to wait a year, get an approved plan, then put the house on the market. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying anything. The article says that, "If the building or premises changes ownership without an approved plan." I imagine approved plan could happen the day after they put the building on the market. Counsel?
I think the intention is, is that if you have a buyer, you can come in with the buyer, get the plan approved, and then move forward. Or you can have a plan approved ahead of time, and so long as the plan stays the same, you don't have to wait again.
But in any case, it's going to be a 12-month demo delay, correct?
Unless the Commission lifts the delay because they've approved your plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the substitute motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to clarify that it's not automatic, that it's-- that someone has to go through a 12-month delay. They come before the Historical Commission--
As counsel just said, if there's an approved plan and the Commission waives the 12 months, then there would be no 12-month delay.
Okay.
Final comment on the substitute motion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Moderator.
Can you move closer so I can hear you in the microphone? Thank you.
My name is Alexis Christopher. I live at 435 Captain Ames. I just have a question. How do you know that you are historically or architecturally in this category?
Ask a good question. Who would like to answer that question? It's Miss Gonfriday.
Yes. What happens is, if your house is 70 years old or more, or the building is 70 years old or more, and you want to apply for a demo demolition permit, then you have to come before the Historical Commission to determine if it's historically significant. That means it could have-- the building itself could be historically significant. It could be historical things that happened in that building, or they can decide that it's either in too much disrepair to be restored, or they can also help you to find people to help you restore it.
So I think the answer to the question is, there are no objective guidelines. It will depend upon the building itself.
Yes, it just starts with the 70 years.
Yes, there are, in fact--
You've actually been up before.
Not for this.
You're right, not for the substitute motion. I apologize.
Yep.
Thanks for keeping me straight.
Yes, okay. There are, in fact, guidelines which all Historical Commissions use based upon the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. At the federal level, there are four criteria, some of them, as Gonfriday mentioned, that is, it is associated with a particular historic event, whether a historic person, an architectural style that is unique, or the work of a master, or likely to yield significant scientific evidence. And those are the four criteria which all Historic Commissions use.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll now take a vote on the substitute motion. All those in favor of the substitute motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. The substitute motion passes. The substitute motion is now the main motion for Article 12. Is there any further discussion on Article 12? Seeing no further discussion on Article 12, we'll move to a vote with the substitute motion being the motion. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. Article 12 passes. There be no further business. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.